Okay, good evening, Tukahoe, and welcome to the May 13th, Tukahoe Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Before we start the official meeting, I'd like to just recognize the passing of our esteemed trustee, trustee Stephen Quigley. I didn't know Steve that well beforehand, and I got to know him lightly as a zoning board member and chairman. And as I said at the village board meeting, I knew the village trustees, the rest of them all personally. So that when I did present anything to the village board members and the mayor, I did happen to pay, you know, special attention to trustee Quigley's reactions to me since he didn't know me. And I was always very impressed and pleased to see with the intensity of what he was listening to as far as my presentation. And it was always very intense and very comforting in his reactions to what I was saying. And it was clear to me that trustee Quigley was for Tukahoe and Tukahoe first. His legacy, in my opinion, will be lasting, as every other trustees is, on this village. And the current residents and future residents will benefit from his work for generations. Is there anyone else that would like to add anything?
I would just like to say, echo many of the words that chairman Gallo said. Steve Quigley was a good man. I've known him for the last three or four years. Got to know him through the budget planning committee I was a part of. And what struck me was how good-natured he was. He was always smiling. He was always happy. He was always extremely thoughtful and, as Ron said, a great listener and always had the interest of the Village of Tukahoe at heart and first and foremost in his mind. And he will be dearly missed by many of us.
Anyone else? What I'd like to do is just stand for a moment of silence, please. Okay, I'll ask everyone to continue standing. This is normally when we do our pledge of allegiance. In honor of trustee Quigley, I'd like to make a slight change to that. So instead of the pledge, I'm going to speak the words of our Star Spangled Banner for trustee Quigley. "Jose, can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, where the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare and the bombs bursting in air gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Jose does that Star Spangled Banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave. God rest his soul, Steve Quigley." Thank you. Nancy, please take the roll.
Member Ringwald.
Here.
Member Scalzo.
Present.
Member Palladino.
Here.
Member Barredes.
Present.
Chairman Gallo.
Present, okay. The first order of business would be the minutes of April 8th. I was not here for that meeting. I apologize to the village. I did have numerous businesses that I had to take care of. So I will ask for a motion to... Well, is there any changes or any additions that anyone would like?
No. I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the April 8th zoning board of appeals.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Upstaying. Okay, so we have a long agenda, but most of it is adjourned. 50 Columbus, which is about the Verizon facility on our apartment building there. And it did come up at the work session as to the... Hi. Is...I see a young man in a very impressive uniform. Is there something that we need or that I need to be aware of? No? Just want to make sure. I know that we just did our member trustee Quigley, and I know he was a scoutmaster, and I just wasn't sure. So I just want to be sure. Okay, great. All right, so back to Columbus. So it did come up at the work session as to the length of time that something like this can be continually adjourned. And so this is something that we're going to be keeping an eye on as to, you know, what we can do to see if this is going to be dropped or moved along or what the status, future status is. So the next thing is 56 Undill Street has been adjourned at the request of the applicant. 10 Fisher is the bakery that's adjourned. 93-95 Main Street is adjourned. So what I'm first going to call up is 146 Wallace Avenue, the legalization of a garage. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Dennis Lucenti, owner of 146 Wallace Street in Tukahoe. I'm here today to legalize an existing garage that's been there since approximately the 1950s. It's come to our attention that there was no permit for the garage when I took ownership. It's been in our family since it was built. Just changed ownership throughout family members. We're looking for a variance for the front setback of four foot, three inches and three-quarter. And the left side, we need two foot, two and a half inches. And the requirement is five feet for both of them. So we'd be looking for relief on that. As I mentioned, it was pre-existing. You could see the photo on the top. And we actually had it all stuccoed. That's the newest photo on the bottom. And that's pretty much it. No other modifications have been done to the structure itself, and it's built out of concrete.
Okay, great. You have any idea when this building was built approximately?
The garage, if I'm not mistaken, was in the 1950s. The house was built before that. I would probably say maybe the 20s, but I'm not positive.
You've been doing a lot of renovation to this property, it looks like. But you claim you haven't changed the footprint at all of the garage?
Not at all. Strictly stucco, just because the old cement, as you see from the top, it had that old foot...the house had that old footprint stucco on it. It was very old styled. I wanted to update it just to go with the neighborhood. There's a brand-new house to our right that was just built. That looks great. And I felt that the stucco that we ended up doing kind of fit with the neighborhood with the new development that's happening. And I thought it was very positive. And now, when it came to...when we found out there was no permit for the garage, we wanted to, you know, get that straightened up.
Any other questions from the members?
Yes, as far as the setbacks and everything, these were existing and always have been?
Yes, they have always been. From our knowledge, when that was built in the 50s, that is...there's been no modification since.
And have you properly noticed the neighbors? You received that bill?
Yes, and I gave them all the notifications and the publication in the newspaper.
We already received it, and everything's fine.
Great, thank you.
Any other members have questions?
Open for the public.
I'd just like to say that this is something that I believe, and if I can speak for the board, is something that is healthy for the community, which is, again, we have older houses that have had work done in the years when the zoning laws were all different. And I just would like to always encourage the residents who may have some outstanding issues and may be concerned that this is something that, you know, may cause them a lot of grief. I think that it is a smart way to come to the building department and come to the zoning board. We're a zoning board that does understand, you know, the ages and the variant...variety of things that have happened in the past. And we want to work with the community and help people tighten up and legalize their houses for refinancing purposes or sale purposes, that there's nothing to be concerned about. We've always, you know, been pleased with the way the building department has worked with the residents. And it's in everyone's best interest, you know, for residents to do as this resident is doing. Okay, thanks. So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to make a motion to open a public hearing for 146 Wallace. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing is now open for Wallace on the legalization of an existing garage. Is there anyone from the public that would like to come up and speak in any way or any questions about this property? Seeing none, I will make a motion to close the public hearing on 146 Wallace. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Any additional commentary from the board members?
I just wanted to add one thing, which I had mentioned earlier. And that has to do with the importance of reviewing one's property to make sure that you are up to code and that everything is properly C of O'd. Because it's one of the reasons why sales get held up and there are issues with banks and mortgages and title. So it's not just for the sake of, you know, coming forward. It's also because it helps things happen. So if you're interested in upgrading, making your home beautiful, or selling it, this is one of the things you really need to be doing for your property. And we are very open to helping you accomplish this.
Well said. Okay, that being it, I have a motion which I'm going to read to the record. And to the record, it's from the Village of Tukahoe Zoning Board of Appeals, Wednesday, May 13th, 2015. This is a SEQA resolution. The application of area variance requested by Lucenti Management LLC, property address 146 Wallace Street, Tukahoe, Section 38, Block 5, Lot 108. The relief of the following section of codes 4-3.4.5, location of accessory buildings on a lot Section 4-3.4.6, buffer, SEQA resolution. Based on the application as submitted, this zoning board of appeals finds and determines that, one, the action taken herein is an unlisted action subject to the requirements of SEQA and its implementing regulations. Number two, the zoning board of appeals is in possession of all information reasonably necessary to make the determination as to the environmental significance of the proposed area variance application. Number three, that the action taken herein shall not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and it is declared that a negative declaration is hereby adopted with regard of this action. So I'm making this motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any commentary? Call the roll, Nancy, please.
Member Ringwald.
Approved.
Member Scalzo.
Approved.
Member Palladino.
In favor.
Member Barredes. In favor.
Chairman Gallo.
In favor. Okay, so I will sign the SEQA. Okay, I'm going to read a resolution and to the record. I'm going to make this motion and read it in the form of a resolution. The appeal is taken to this board to legalize a garage that has existed in its current location in excess of 60 years. Therefore, the recommendation is for the area variance to be granted as the benefit to the applicant, and the area variances outweigh the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. The applicant has demonstrated through its submission and presentation that has met all aspects of the five-prong test to the satisfaction of the board. I've read this in as a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Nancy, please. Any commentary, any discussion? Nancy, please, call the roll.
Member Ringwald.
In favor.
Member Scalzo.
In favor.
Member Palladino.
In favor.
Member Barredes. Chairman Gallo.
In favor. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Emilio Escaladas from Escaladas Associates Architects and Engineers. We're seeking a variance in order to rectify the situation, the illegal use of a basement, the lowest level. Presently, the building is being occupied by three tenants, which is under the existing grandfathered zoning allowed. We will continue to keep the same number of residents, but distribute it differently through the building. Right now, the three residents are in the upper two floors. After this application, if approved, we will have one of the residents on the first floor live in the lower floor.
Okay, excuse me. That microphone is portable. Maybe...so the television guy had a good zoom-in of the plan, and they're a little bit complicated. So I think that this is perfect if we can get the TV guy to zoom back in on that. Eh, okay, zoom in a little bit more. Beautiful, good job. All right, okay, so we can go through it. Good.
Okay, the yellow drawing in the middle represents the first floor. As it stands right now, there are two residents, one towards the front, one towards the rear. After this...if this application is approved, the tenant in the front will move to the downstairs, occupying a much more comfortable...
Excuse me?
Sorry, right here. This is the...I'm sorry, this is the basement. So this person would move into the basement, same number of bedrooms, but a much more comfortable environment, much larger space. The tenant in the back will then move towards the front. So now, the first floor will be occupied by the tenant that used to be in the rear. And then, the tenant on top stays on top. It's unaffected. The variances that we need to...we need to have a site plan approval, and we need to have a use variance for this particular proposal. We base that request on the economics of the existing condition. When we do the numbers and we subtract the expenses and the taxes, the yield, the economic yield of this investment is roughly 1.5%, which is very inex...quite low with respect to a real estate type of investment. Normally, a real estate type of investment is expected to yield between 5% and 15%. By doing this and readjusting the rentals based on the new areas, the income rises to approximately a closer number to 5%. The documents that we submitted to you represent these numbers. We also compare our rents in our analysis with the existing rents that are in the market right now. We have documented the addresses and the places that are asking for those dollar values based on the market. So we feel that it's a very accurate analysis. Based on that, we're hoping that the board will grant this. At the same time, we eliminate the violation that was listed against the basement. The existing conditions, architectural conditions of the basement, allow for safe use and occupancy. The height is there, the means of egress is there, the heating is there, the facilities for bathroom and kitchen is there. That's what prompted the violation, that it was being occupied illegally, unbeknownst to the buyer. And this is why we're here. We...that's it.
When was the property purchased?
Two years ago, approximately two years ago.
So it was purchased in the neighborhood of current values?
Totally. It was $555,000.
This wasn't something that was bought a long time ago?
No, no, no. His investment was fairly steep.
Okay, can I ask member Barredes? Is 5% to 15%, you know, based on your real estate experience as a real estate broker, is that what is expected on a return on a rental property?
I think that the percentage of return is usually contingent on the level of the apartment or building in his area and the type of building that it is. A 5% is a modest return. It's not an exorbitant return. It's a fairly modest return on the investment.
Yes.
He does take depreciation, has other benefits to ownership, but that is not a generous return on a $550,000 investment.
Yes.
The...since the property was built and first occupied as a three-unit apartment, it's now been downzoned to a two-unit. Clearly, if we denied the use of three apartments there to the current zoning of two apartments, I would assume your return on investment would turn sharply negative.
Yeah, it would be on the negative side and total disastrous for the owner. Absolutely, it would not be...
But his expectation when he bought was how many units?
Well, it's the typical story of being presented with a particular use and occupancy, and the owner trusts that that use will remain the same. The owner is not that experienced in real estate sales and purchases. This is...I'm sure if you...I don't know if he wants to...
Come on up, sir.
Yeah. And I don't think he knew that the changes were forthcoming of losing two of the four units that he had at the time. At the time that this...he bought the structure, four floors were being rented and...
Four apartments.
Four apartments. And of course, Bill came in and said, "No, that's illegal use." It was unknown to him. So of course, we lost that particular tenant, and so now we're down to three. And what the proposal will hopefully bring forth is the entire use of the building, which is fully developed, but only for three families.
Parking. Where are we on parking in this?
Parking won't change. We have...we have space for three cars, I believe, in the front right side. The same tenants will remain. There's no increase in the number of bedrooms, children. Everything stays the same, status quo.
There was also one other point that was made, and that had to do with the fact that the basement does meet all necessary...
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. I was there, and then there...part of this approval will involve Bill's review of the electrical, the plumbing, the means of egress, all the architectural requirements of the code. Yeah.
Let me clarify. The number of legal tenants is going to remain the same.
Correct.
What we're doing is increasing the living area, but not increasing the number of bedrooms, correct?
That is correct. The number of bedrooms total stay the same.
That's why the parking requirement for that configuration remains the same.
The population does not increase.
Any other members? Any commentary? No? I think on the bedroom issue, in addition to, you know, the bedrooms generally reflect the amount of services that the drain on the...so therefore, with the bedroom staying the same, the trash, for instance, would be something that we would be concerned about. And it's, you know, drain on the services, you know. And so it appears that, you know, from what we've reviewed, that that would remain constant. It wouldn't be a negative impact on the tax base, on the tax expenses. Does the building department need...want to add anything? Okay. All right, I'm going to...you guys can sit down. I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing on 32 Pleasant Place. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing for 32 Pleasant Place variance is now open. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak about 32 Pleasant and the variance requested? Seeing none, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing on...
Want to close it or keep it open?
Why do we need to keep it open?
Okay, let's close it.
Does anyone have a...you know, I mean, before I make the motion? You know, if we had one person coming up?
No.
I don't see...you know, we're not going to make a decision on this tonight, but...
I think it's a complicated application with asking for both a use variance for pre-existing condition and an area variance. So it's going to take us some time to formulate, you know, our response.
I agree with that.
And so we're not ready to make a response tonight.
I agree with that.
So, but...
If I could just chime in on that?
Sure.
If you do close the public hearing tonight, it puts you on the clock to make a decision. 62 days, village law. So if you carry it, then your clock won't start running.
What was it, next meeting then? It's not going to make any difference.
But if you do carry it, you know, would need the consent of the applicant, just that if there's no issue with you carrying it.
Leaving the public.
We'd like...we want to keep it open? We want to make a motion to keep the public hearing open for another month.
For which address?
For 32 Pleasant Place.
There's a motion to...on the floor to keep the public hearing open on 32 Pleasant Place. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to work real hard on this. And, you know, we encourage the public to... Right now, I would be leaning in favor of this just to put it out there from what I see, unless something comes up next month. But we'll continue to, you know, work on this diligently. I do appreciate the presentation. It was quite succinct...succinct is the word that I want to use from this architect. And I want to appreciate the applicant forthcoming with the financials, which is something that is quite necessary in a use variance. And it is a complicated issue, and it is something that we're concerned about with precedent. But we did do a good amount of homework with this in the work session, and we'll continue to do it. We'll see you next month. Thank you. Okay, the final one is 100 Main. It's just the public knows we're going to be holding a special work session after this. One of the things that have been brought up to me is that we've been late to our meetings. And it's only been recently because we've had some very, very complicated, large issues in front of us, i.e. the hotel. And that's caused a lot of discussion and forced us to, you know, maybe be short-sighted in some of the smaller applications because of it. And our meetings would then be starting late. So what we've decided to do is we were going to hold a... we are going to hold a special work session to work very hard on 100 Main. We have worked very hard on it. And we all feel that instead of coming back in two weeks for another one, since everyone's here for it, that we would just close tonight's meeting and then just go right back into our work session again and continue working on 100 Main. So it is adjourned with the board. It is a request from this board to adjourn 100 Main. Correct, right? Okay. That ends tonight's meeting before we...is there anything that anyone wants to add? I do want to add something. I want the public to know information that we have or things that happened to us which are relevant to this. And this board...the public knows that this board is required to do continuing education. And I, you know, have learned a lot from over the years of the continuing education. So there was a rather large one that recently took place at Westchester Community College. And I was thrilled to attend it with member Barredes and member Palladino, and also Planning Board member Claire Gorman was there. And it was a breakout session where there were multiple areas for everyone to choose of which one they wanted to attend. And one of the things that I've always had trouble, and I still have trouble with, is the SEQA. I mean, that's something that, you know, it's just... it's something new and environmental and trying to understand it. So it's something that I wanted to attend that work session and, you know, try to grasp a little better understanding of. It was a large room, and it was extremely well-attended by zoning board members from around the county. And what I found most interesting was that it... the county members or the county board, whoever is in charge of this, selected someone that we're all familiar with to educate the zoning board members on SEQA. And he is BFJ Planning Frank Fish. So I was thrilled to see Mr. Fish be selected to educate the zoning board members on such a complicated issue. And to me, that speaks volumes as to the view that the county has of him and his abilities. So he also was quite interesting that he did use our Marble Dell recent application as to clearly explain to all the zoning board members about SEQA and how it worked and how it worked. So it came to me that, you know, that this village board has selected a proper individual company to advise us because it's been seconded by the county board. So I just want to make that...I want the public to know that and the rest of our members. Okay, anything else anyone like to add? Our next meeting is going to also be a special meeting of June 3rd. Normally, I think it was the 10th was the normal one. And so we're going to be having it on June 3rd. So everyone mark down on your calendars for that. Everyone's in agreement on that one. Everyone's in agreement on that one. And that being said, we're going back to work. So thank you, Tuckahoe. I will seek a motion to close the zoning board meeting of Wednesday, May 13, 2015. Is someone moved? No, I need to move first. I'm seeking.
So moved.
Okay, anyone have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night, Tuckahoe.